Okay, 6 o'clock. Call the meeting to order. And our agenda tonight is very simple. We are going to have a presentation right now. And then, public discussion. Welcome, dear public. Yeah, you are the only ones. Luke, is that correct? Yeah. Luke is here from EEI, the company that has been working with us on these plans. So he's here to answer the technical questions, if you have any. So thank you for coming, Luke. Hi, Greg. Welcome. And so, here's our presentation. And Joanne, have you already seen this presentation? Have you been to any of the other meetings?
I don't think I've seen it.
Okay. I just, I figured, I know Greg has seen it. I believe we've all seen it, probably. So I was going to say, I won't do the full vote.
I was gonna say, you can probably go through it fast.
Okay.
I just have a few questions, anyway.
Okay.
I pretty much understand.
Can you see it okay from there?
Oh yeah, I can see well.
Okay.
Okay. So introductions are in order. I am Nancy Pejey, Chair of the Board.
Andrew Bowen, Elementary Principal.
Doug Marshall.
Joanne Marshall.
Julie Hinman.
Dave Duell.
Jamie Vettel.
Fred Solomon.
Royalton.
Gail Plon.
This school.
Shane Oaks, incoming high school virtual.
Great news from Bethel.
And Luke, from EEI.
Yes, Luke is there. Thank you.
Great. So, let's, maybe, go on. Okay. So, here's the deal. The whole project is $6.8 million. That is not what we're asking for. We already have money in the capital reserve. We have money that's been pledged to us. And we have money that actually is in hand, that has been given to us. And so, what we are asking for is 3.8 million. Now unfortunately, some of the misinformation that's been out there on Front Page Forum and on Facebook is saying that we're asking for 6.8 million, and that is not true. So 3.8 million is what the bond would be for. And for the average home in both Royalton and Bethel, which the average is about $200,000 valuation, that will be less than $50 per year for the, actually, it's going to go down at some point even. But, so it's not, it's not a huge, huge ask, we don't think anyways. We're hoping that, that the rest of the people. And if, if somebody qualifies for the homestead, then it's going to be even less. So, low income, it could be $15 a year. And what we're getting for them is so amazing. So, stop me if at any point you want to ask a question on one of the slides, okay? So, why now? Well, we have a lot of students, more than Soro had back in the day when it was South Royalton High School, and more than the combination of Bethel and Soro would have had. And we just keep going up. And the reason we're going up is people want to bring their kids to our schools. We had budgeted last year for 45 kids to be tuitioned into our schools, and we ended up with 80. And $20,000 each is what that tuition is, that their towns are paying for them to come to our school. And they could choose any school. They're choosing our school. And so, we, we budgeted for 45, figuring, you know, that was a good estimate as to how many we would get. We got 35 more than that. So that was an extra $700,000. And, you know, that, you can't beat that. We're offering these people great academics, great arts programs, great athletics programs, and their kids want to be here. And that just basically is the same slide. And I'm still on the same slide. So, secure entrances. I don't think anybody out there is arguing that we don't need secure entrances. Right now, the middle school entrance, it's beautiful with the nice mosaics that have probably been there. Were they there when you were a kid?
Yeah, I think so.
Anyway. Joanne graduated from, from Bethel, from Whitcomb. But anyway, it's, it's a beautiful entrance, it's not a secure entrance. And so, we would like to build that out so it is a secure entrance. And the same thing at Royalton. Most people park in the parking lot to the right of the school. That's the large parking lot. The entrance there is just the two double metal doors, and that's not a secure entrance. So what we want to do is change that entrance so it would match more like what's on the front, and the person that buzzes people in would be able to see, and it just would make it more secure. Right now, unfortunately, that door gets kind of left open in the mornings because kids arrive and they hold it open for each other, or they wedge something in there. It's not a secure door. Not only that, I know the first time I ever went to a performance at Soro, I had no idea how to get into the place. I was, I parked in that parking lot, and I'm like, well, there's those two doors, but they don't look like they would be an entrance to go to a play or a concert, whatever it is I was going to. And so, the new entrance will be much, much friendlier. And people will know, oh, this is how we get in. Whoops, there it was. It came by for a second there. So, a much more secure and friendlier entrance. It really likes it. There we go. And, okay, there's the technical stuff of what would be happening there. It would also change the lobby area. If you go to performances that are in the small gym typically, all of the musical performances, there's a very, very narrow lobby there. The bathrooms are very hidden, and people end up just kind of piling in there. So it's going to be a larger lobby and handicap accessible bathrooms. What am I doing wrong, Calvin? And so that's the new lobby, a much larger lobby.
Well, an actual lobby, it's really just a hallway right now.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a lobby at all right now. The other part is the shop expansion. Right now, shop has been a really popular class. Not everybody wants to commit to going to the technical center. They don't want to be at Randolph all day long. They want to take one shop class, whether it's woodworking, auto, welding, and there is not enough room. If you come on the 19th, when we're over there, we'll take people on a tour of the shop area. And you'll see for yourself that it's very limited to the projects. And again, this is one of the things that attracts tuition students, is the idea that, oh, I can still take a shop class, I don't have to go to a technical high school, I can still do the academics and take it as an elective. Oh, well.
Are you double-clicking it?
I don't think so. I might be just doing too heavy. Why don't you do the clicking? You can do it on yours, right? Okay, the performing arts wing, that's the biggie. It is not a, it is not a theater. It is, I mean, I wish it were. I wish we could have afforded to have built a whole theater, because every time I go to a performance at the school, I feel really badly for these kids that are working so hard, and the acoustics are so poor that you have a hard time hearing them, even if they're mic'd. And, and my ears are pretty good still, even though I'm old. And, but no, we're not doing a whole theater. It's not happening, even though, again, I've heard, I've seen people on Front Page Forum saying, "We don't need a theater." Well, we're not building a theater. It's a, it's more of a practice space. Right now, the practice space is on the lowest level, underneath the elementary school. The kids have to go down there. It's very small. The band director has to wear ear protection because the decibel level is so high when the kids are practicing in band, that he needs ear protection. And the kids should probably be having it also. I mean, it's that loud. It's been measured to be, I think it was over 120 decibels, something like that. So, and they're jammed in there. Again, performing arts is one of the things that attracts people. We have fantastic teachers that are doing band and chorus, and people want to come. They, they're very much attracted to it. And the plays, too, have been fantastic. So to have a better practice space, that, you know, we've really outgrown that. So, that's the biggie. That's the 3.391644. That's, that's the biggie. But again, it's, it's something that is really needed and important. It's also going to make the stage area handicap accessible. Right now, kids with disabilities can't get up on the stage, there's, they can't be part of the performances. And so, that is built in here of making it all accessible. In our original plan, we were also going to be doing the acoustics in the gym to make it better acoustics, and that part actually got taken out after the first vote, when people were saying, "You need to do something to cut this down." And so, that part is going to be done by fundraising. Unless we have, you know, some kind of magic wand that all of a sudden we have enough money to do it, that would be wonderful. Okay, Calvin. Thank you. So that's what that performing arts wing would look like. And a survey was done. Thirty percent of the kids that tuitioned in last year, when we were doing surveys of everybody, 30% of them said that the Performing Arts Music Program was one of their main reasons for choosing us. I know that, I know that Woodstock would be another logical choice for a lot of these kids, like especially if they're coming from Stockbridge and, or Rochester. Woodstock doesn't even have a choral program. They, they dropped their choral program 10 years or 15 years ago. So that's a biggie. That's attracting kids. Any questions on the diagram or anything? Okay. Go ahead, Calvin. Thanks. So that's what that would look like. That's the front of the school. So if you're standing at the school, that would be, that would be the new front. It matches more with what the, the new gym, when they built the new gym on, there's that same kind of edifice.
I guess I can't picture where that's at.
Okay.
If I'm standing in front of the school.
You're standing in front of the school.
You're standing on the road.
Yeah, that's, that's the road.
You're standing in the road.
Yep.
It's Windsor Street.
Oh, the, if you're on the road.
And this is the parking lot to the right.
All right, I got you now.
Yeah.
I understand.
And there's the new entrance, the secure entrance from the parking lot.
I see it now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Calvin. And these are the upgrades that are going to make it much better for acoustics and lighting. Those are the things that kind of got taken out. This presentation was the one from November. We did not redo it. I mean, these are still things that are going to need to get done. We are hoping to get all of this done. But some of it is going to have to wait. The elevator lift for wheelchair access to the stage, that's, that's a biggie. I think that, that one is staying in. So that's, that's it for that. Thank you, Calvin. This is a video the kids made, and to explain why they would like to see this happen.
When I came back to Vermont, the local high schools, none of them had bands. I decided that we had to have bands. So I did. I started bands in four of the towns in this area. South Royalton first, and then Randolph, and Bethel, and Rochester.
It started with Dick Ellis as a proponent of music. He taught in all of the schools in the district, probably at that time, and he led the town band. And I saw at that time, even before my children were in school, that here was a community that embraced music.
One, two, three, ready, and...
To have like such a supportive music program has like helped a lot of people like gain access to be able to do what they want to do.
I play the trombone. I'm in concert band, jazz band.
Chorus band. Jazz band.
Normal band, and theater.
Music's always been a big part of my life, and I've been in band and chorus for as long as it's been available.
I've been going to concerts at South Royalton since probably 1979, 80, something like that. But as an audience member, it is really hard to keep things under control because there is so much noise reverberating in the room. If our students can have a space that has good acoustics and can understand for themselves what they are producing, that makes a better musician.
When I go down to like the band room, like, and I see like, like the band class, like, and I see how many kids there are in there, it's so, like, it's so confined that, but there's so many kids that want to join band.
Our music program is growing, and we just need a larger rehearsal space for these students. It's, it's pretty chaotic, to be honest. So probably about 10% of class is spent just setting up and breaking down. If, if the setup was there already, students didn't have to do that, that could be a lot more time that students could be accessing their education.
We spend all these months like playing this music in the basement room, and the acoustics in there, it's like too much to be playing, not to mention the fact that we have like damaging amounts of sound hitting our ears when we're trying to rehearse down there.
There is very little room to walk around. It's a hazard if there's an emergency. Anybody can walk into the band rehearsal on any day that band is rehearsing and see that it is at max capacity.
Well, the Performing Arts Center would be such a great addition, especially to our music department in general, just, I mean, what we have to do now is, in order to get to a concert, we have to lug all of our instruments, all the percussion, everything up the stairs into the small gym, which is basically on the other side of the school than the current band room we're in.
I don't think students feel like it's a space where they're being celebrated. I think it's a space that we are making do, but I don't think they are walking out and getting the musical experience that they deserve.
25% of our students are involved with the music program here at White River Valley High School. You know, when they built the new gym years ago, there was a lot of pride in our school in athletics, and, you know, the gym came, and like saying is, if you build it, they will come. And I think it's true. When you talk about pride in our school, you know, pride is a sense of belonging. And I think it's important that everyone has that sense of belonging in our school. Providing the Performing Arts Center will be a chance for a lot of our students to have that sense of belonging and more pride in our school.
There's a, a good buzz with the, the new Wildcat. It's a combination of two schools coming together, has won. And out of the gate, the, you know, academics has been a very large focus of that. We've most recently seen athletics be a big focus, and now, and now the piece that we're looking at this point to complete that package is the, the performing arts piece of it.
The kids with school choice, they, they get to look around, they get to see which schools they want to come to. With a Performing Arts Center, we're gonna, our school's gonna look a lot nicer, first of all. And already, the music department and the theater department's such a massive draw.
You know, we kicked around some numbers. If we just had eight to 10 new students that came to our school every year that just wanted to participate in the Performing Arts piece, that that would pay a bond vote.
When we're in a rehearsal, and we've been working on something, and something just comes together in a way that is really powerful, that they can feel it, I can feel it, there's, there's the sense in the room that something just happened.
Look what they can produce together. And that blended sound is the community of your singers, the community of your instrumentalists in band and orchestra, whatever it is. I want that for all students. That is my goal, is to make sure that there's music in everybody's life. And I think that the kids embrace that.
Even though we're the ones like talking about this right now, and we're, we're here, I guarantee you if you go and ask anybody else who's part of these programs, part of the band or chorus or theater program, they're gonna agree, and they're gonna say how useful and helpful of a tool the PAC would be.
I've always thought that saying that success breeds success is quite true, because with that, we somehow got a reputation of being a fairly good band.
Any questions?
Not on that, no.
Okay. The, another important piece is the ventilation upgrades. The, the high school library and the high school chemistry room, is there more than one science room that's got a problem?
Yes.
I know it's, okay. That there's no ventilation, and, yeah. So we need some HVAC stuff done, and we really need it done. And so that's $350,000 worth of, of the bond. Any questions on that part? Yeah, heating. Right now, we have an oil furnace and an oil tank, and this is at the Royalton campus. And the oil tank has used up its life. But the boiler is still good for probably at least another 10 years. Rather than stick with the oil, what we want to do is convert the boiler, because that can happen pretty easily, to propane. And then, instead of replacing the oil tank, to put in a propane tank. And propane's cheaper in the long run than oil, so that's 327,500 to do this initial changeover. But estimated $13,000 a year will be saved in heating costs. So that's another thing that pretty much pays for itself over time. Any questions on that? Okay. Okay. The stormwater abatement, this is the thing that we have no choice on. The state is requiring that we have to fix the problems that when the new gym was built, things were not quite up to what they should have been for drainage and all of that. And so, this, this has to get done. So that's 327,500. So if the bond doesn't pass, that'll come out of our capital fund. That's, there's no question about that. That has to get done. So, total cost again is 6.8 million, but we're asking for 3.8. And that's the breakdown. One of the things about the fundraising, the, the music boosters have been doing fundraising for as long as I've been around here. I, I know that they've been doing bake sales and all of this, and writing grants. And as I said earlier, the Jack Burns, Jack and Dorothy Burns Foundation has very generously given half a million dollars towards this project. That money will have to be given back if the bond does not pass. And the idea that we would be losing a half a million dollars is, that's really hard to bear. Plus, there's other money, too, that would have to get given back. They've had, they did other fundraising, too, with that stipulation that if the bond doesn't pass, then people will be refunded that money. So, I think that probably adds up to another $100,000 or so. So, we're, we're giving back free money. Any questions on this slide? No? Okay. And again, this just goes back to how much is it going to cost, depending upon what your valuation is. And, any questions on that? Nope? Okay. And yeah, here's where we're getting tuition students from. And I asked for clarification. Did you get the mailer, by the way, the trifold? Yeah. I had no idea until I checked with the business office when I was getting that mailer, the letter from the school board. I thought we were getting kids from, oh, maybe half a dozen towns. And Tara corrected me and said that, no, we are actually getting kids from 22 different school districts. I had no idea. So anyways, there's, that's a really good source of income, of revenue. And, yeah, this, this slide is showing, yeah, total bond payments will be less next year fiscal year than, in fiscal year '23. The gym, the new gym that was built with a bond, that bond is going to be paid off in three years. And so, our idea was that we would do interest only for the first three years of this bond, and then that bond is all paid off, and then we just keep going to keep, to keep the taxes lower. So, we're, we're kind of behind the timeline right now. What we'd really like is to get to April 1st, or actually, we'd have to go back to the February to get the bid prep packages. So we're, you know, it would have been nice if this had passed in November, so we would already be starting the project at this point. So obviously, we are behind on that timeline. But, you know, miracles happen. Maybe it would still be ready in the fall of '26.
Is that the completion date?
That, yeah.
Fall of '26?
Fall of '26. So I suppose there is a chance that if we get moving on it right away, that that could still happen. And, okay, for voting, you can go to the town office. Have you already voted?
We already know how to do it. We know how to do it.
Yes. Have you already voted, all of you? Well, not you, Pierre. And not you, Shane. Yeah.
It's gonna be in my lobby. I got this. It's gonna be in the lobby. I got this.
Okay, okay. Yes, we definitely are trying to get the vote out. So, okay. And thank you for your continued support. And I hadn't noticed, there have been some people that have joined us online. Let's see. Missy and Ben, I don't know who that might be, and Josh White. Did any of you have questions? I should have been asking you right along.
No, just coming out to support.
Thank you. So, any discussion?
Okay, I got a few questions.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna go back to that 700,000 we got in tuition.
Yes.
Where's that money going? Are we spending it as we get it, or are we putting that aside and saving some of that?
Okay. We voted the last time that we had this surplus, we added it to our capital fund. We, so, so that's what we've been doing with it. And I assume that the surplus that we're gonna have this year, that's the projected 700,000, that the board will have to decide what to do with that. And I'm assuming that will also go into the capital fund. I think that the idea is to just keep putting it into the capital fund so that we've got that ready, ready to go when we need it.
Nancy, I would also just add to that, that school budgets and expenses... Nancy, I would also just add to that, that school budgets and expenses around the state have been skyrocketing and ours within this district have remained relatively flat. And that is in large part because of the increase in tuition students. So it has offset a lot of the pain that other communities around the state have been feeling and voting against budgets and such as a result of.
I just said that because if we're taking that extra money, that $700,000, and spending it, then you're over budget. It's more than what we thought we were paying for our school. So I would like to see it saved someplace like that. And I know Greg said, I said something to Greg yesterday. Are we sure we're gonna get this project done for 6.8 million dollars? With the cost of materials and the tariffs and everything else that might be going on right now, are we gonna get it done for that price?
We did build in, right from the start, an extra 5% just in case costs went up.
That doesn't seem like much.
Yeah. And that's where the capital fund could come in also, that we'd be able to cover some of those expenses with the capital fund.
When's the last time you had an estimate done?
Luke probably could answer that question for us. Luke, how current are we on our estimates?
Estimates are, they're just that, they're estimates, right? So, and nothing that I say is a promise of the future, right? No one has a crystal ball. But I will say that our last estimates were done from the November bond or the November vote. That gave us our good numbers. We've been watching the markets, obviously, the tariffs are something that we have to pay attention to. But we've found that many of our vendors that we work with are able to be really transparent with us, we're able to lock in numbers before things change. And we're able to find other products if necessary to keep costs within budget. So that is something that we, that we're able to do is just monitor those and keep things on task, on plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing. So, said something to you yesterday about this. Do we know we'll have a school in three years with Governor Scott right now? We may look attractive, but this is what I'm hearing all through town. You've seen it on Facebook, you're seeing it all over social media. Are we gonna have a school? Are we gonna be paying on bond for 30 years and we won't have a school?
Okay, Ed, you wanna take this one?
Love to. The way it would happen is if Montpelier takes over from us, they take over all debt or all surplus. So if we have $2.5 million in the Capital Reserve and Montpelier votes to take us over, we hand them $2.5 million and then they can close our schools and send all of our kids to Randolph or Montpelier. If we do the project and the bond passes, our schools then look more attractive and we become the possible choice as the destination to keep open for the elementary or the high school. If we lose our schools in our communities, it's my belief and other people can speak for themselves, that that's going to ruin our community much worse than any tax situation that's being imagined. Because we'll stop having families move to this town and it'll just be older folks dying off as property values decline. And that's not what I want to see for Bethel or Roylton. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't have moved to Roylton if my kids had to go to school in Randolph. I would have moved to Randolph, one of the surrounding Randolphs. You don't want to move to a town where there's no school. And in all honesty, it's a zero-sum game. Because if we have the money and Montpelier says you no longer have control, they get all of our money. If we spend this supervisor union into a debt, they assume all the debt. Now, I believe it's not fiscally responsible to spend us into a debt, but I do not want to give $2.5 million over to Montpelier just so that they can close our school and have our towns begin economic decline. That's...
There's been a lot happening in Montpelier now. The governor's original plan was he wanted to make five districts with 4,000 students in each district. Greg knows a whole lot more about this than I do. Greg, you wanna speak to this?
Sure. I've been participating with the Commission on the Future of Public Education through last summer and through last fall. Notwithstanding what you might hear of why that commission wasn't able to do their job, the real reason why they weren't able to do their job is the agency of education is so critically understaffed, they couldn't give them the data that they needed to do their job. And that was somewhat a recurring theme through the whole thing. So the fact that the Commission on the Future of Education didn't come up with some tangible results, it wasn't their fault. And then when this transformation plan came and it was introduced in January, this was not homegrown. This came out of a group funded by the Koch Brothers. They're called the, one of his political action committees. And their goal, long-term, step by step, is to dismantle public education, eliminate local control, and privatize it. And in some instances, they're making money on the privatization of the education. It's an alarming trend. If you want to read more about that, Senator Sanders Committee, last June, June of '24, published a whole report about this and has data supporting the whole thing. So that's really what's undermining the governor's plan. The other thing of the weakness of governor's plan, and our superintendent showed this to the Senate Education Committee a couple of weeks ago, the plan that they're hanging their hat on is this Pikes Ogden Report. And it was, it came into the Commission on the Future of Public Education last September. And actually, people that did more research on it realized that basically that was just a cut and paste job. They had done this for Maryland, they had done this for Michigan, and basically, they kind of changed that report and fudged a little bit for Vermont. But then even the consultant said, you need to realize Vermont, this is probably not relevant for you. This is only relevant where you have a certain density of population. And they said that would be the, like the Chittenden County parts of Vermont. They called it the normal-sized high schools in the more densely populated parts of the state. Well, the reality is Vermont is the most rural state in the nation. We have 65% of our communities are less than 2,500 people. And that makes us distinctly different than the whole report that the governor's plan was based on. And I really compliment our superintendent's, his presentation to the Senate Finance Committee, it kind of changed the tone up there. And he made a point that just because you're bigger, you're not gonna be better. Just because you're bigger, you're not gonna be less expensive. The fact is, the state cannot prove with numbers that what they're trying to do is gonna save us money or increase the quality of our education. The data does not exist. And I think that's gonna be a showstopper. The other thing is that this supervisory union actually is kind of a poster child and that they're pointing to us for other parts of the state to take a look at what we've done. Because I was on the board from here, from '96 to '94 to 2006. So that's pre-Brigham, Act 60, post-Act 60. So I watched that whole transition change through that whole thing. And we were the Windsor-Northwest Supervisory Union. Roylton had the Orange-South Supervisory Union, I think. And then they merged. So we, we're big. We're 10 towns. We take up parts of Addison County, Windsor County, and Orange Counties, or parts of three counties. And if you drive from Stratford up to Granville, I don't think you could make it in an hour, even if you crossed the mountain. And so when you looked at it, like, how big do they think we're gonna get? But the fact is, we've done what others are thinking of doing. We closed four high schools. That's really hard to do. And then we merged the middle school and the high school. And basically, what we've done is we've created this web and this network of students from the elementary schools feeding into our high school. And basically, if you really pay attention in Montpelier, they're pointing to us and they're saying, this is what we need to do. This is the model that we should follow here because it's high-quality and it's cost containment. It's economical, economical for these people to do this. So, Joanne, I don't see any risk of them closing us. More so, I think the best news I read this week is that we don't have a PCB problem. You know? Hartford has a whole showstopper. You know, they're tearing down 50 to 60% of their buildings and they don't know what to do. Woodstock is a plumbing problem away from trying to find where to park 500 kids for a while because their building, I think, is the most depleted building, most depreciated buildings currently in the state. So, and Randolph has problems too. I think when you look around at what we've got and what we've done, I think this is very much worth investing in. And as far as the quality of communities, consider the quality of a community if you have vibrant middle school and a vibrant high school in there. When you have a concert, when you have a ballgame, people come in, people stop and eat dinner there, they do business with the merchants, they buy gas in the gas station, everything is better. The alternative is put your kids on a bus and send them 20 miles in the other direction. That's not a community anymore, I don't think. So obviously, I support the bond. I don't see a downside to this.
Just one other, and this is something that's on my mind personally. We have our problems as a town. Roylton, I'm thinking of. I don't know, I'm not completely familiar if Bethel has similar, but I think that they might have a section of Bethel where there's problematic elements. Some of the problematic elements in Roylton are right down the street from the school and they're very much talked about. And if we think that we have a drug problem within three blocks of the school, and I'm outside, like it's that Moyes Lane or whatever, what do you think happens if the school closes and then Windsor Street becomes a tumbleweed factory? Well, then more houses are gonna be filled with people and the only people that aren't gonna be the older people are going to be the people in the drug game to hide out in the dilapidated community that we'll become. Now, I agree with him. I don't think, I think we have a fairly good chance of keeping the schools anyway because we've been fiscally responsible and we've kept our schools in nice shape. So we may win anyway, but do we really want to chance that when we have the money, it's the right thing to do, it could benefit the kids? And honestly, I find it a little weird that we've saved money in taxes year after year and now when we're asking for your taxes might be affected by $50 per 100,000, well, that doesn't seem very fair to be fiscally responsible year after year and then when the kids need us to say, oh, well, no.
I'm not disagreeing with them.
Oh, no, 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 I'm explaining, you're being my proxy because these are my hot button issues.
These are things that I'm hearing around town. I get around this town, what is it?
Me too.
Well, I...
Don't be that way. I do go to different places. I go to the library, I go to meetings and stuff. So these are things I'm hearing.
My concerns coming into this evening that I shared with the rest of the board was that I had, I heard too many people saying, oh, vote no on the 6.8 million dollar project. And I'm like, that is not what you're voting on. We're voting on a 3-point-something million dollar bond, not a 6.8 million dollar project. So if you don't know what you're actually voting on to begin with, we have a, that's where, we've failed. So, yeah.
The state makes you put down there the whole amount you're spending, even if you're borrowing this little amount. That's always been an issue. By the way, there was a number up here, they were guessing how many tuition students it would take you to break even on the bond. It's not as high as they say right there. If you're assuming $20,000 per tuition student, all right, well, let me back up. I just made some assumptions that, what was it, what, 3.8 million? I was assuming we were going into the Vermont Municipal Bond Fund. I put in 4% in 30 years and it's gonna be about $220,000 per year, all right? Once we're paying interest and principal, which I think you said, what, year three?
Yeah.
Year three. Okay. So if we had four, we had eight towns, eight towns around us, all looking, where families are looking for somewhere to send their kids. Just four, you know, four kids from eight towns, all right? A half a kid from each town, just four. So four new kids come in the seventh grade, times $20,000, that's $80,000, all right? They stay with us and go to eighth grade, four more come in to seventh grade, that $80,000 just became $160,000. The year three comes in, we got four in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, now we're up to $240,000. Guess what? That's more than the bond payment, principal, and interest. Four kids, four kids pay the bond payment and there's no impact in our taxes. Eight kids come in, our taxes go down. To me, this shouldn't be a hard decision, I think.
And I should, I just want to interject because it's come up before about surplus and the tuition students. So in making the budget to stay conservative and not count on that, that's not built in. So when you say there's going to be that surplus, we don't want to spend it right away, that's exactly what has gone into the pre-planning, so to speak, with the budgeting. So when that happens, which it's more than like, more likely than not that exactly what you just described would happen, that's not baked in here. So that is actually covering that additional cost.
Yeah, and I think when you get to learn how to watch, look at the school's budget, what I used to learn at was to carry forward balance, all right? If you underestimated the year before how many expenses you were gonna have or overestimated your tuition kids and had a negative carry-forward balance, that means you started the year with a big expense that you had to recover for taxes. This scenario here, you're gonna be carrying in a positive carry-forward balance. And what that does, it allows you to absorb uncertainties or lower your tax bill in the next year because you carry that forward.
So you had another question? I'm sorry.
The only thing I was gonna say is that I do hear a lot around town, and I don't necessarily believe this, after watching your video stuff, you know, I think that if more people saw it, you'd probably get a vote. It's too bad that you can't put that video with the kids in the music room online.
It is.
I haven't seen it someplace. Where?
On the Supervisory Union website, this entire presentation is available.
On Facebook where they can see it. Because that's where they're all at. They're all on there talking and stuff. If you could put it onto the elementary page, put it on the high school page, maybe people would see it. I don't know. I've not seen it myself anyway. But the other thing I hear a lot of is, we're putting a lot of money into South Roylton. And I did see what we're putting into Bethel.
Yeah.
But Bethel needs some work too. Go into that gym and the seal, the paint is falling off the ceiling. Have we got plans on fixing that? That gym really needs some paint work on the ceiling.
You've always been very upfront with me, so I'll be just as upfront with you. After we had worked up all the various pieces of what we're looking for in this bond vote, and my focus for this campus was improving the two entrances, whether it's flowing the elementary or bolstering the kind of pass filter of the middle school. The next conversation, the next conversation that I started with the EEI was quite literally a walk through the gym. Looking at the various inspection reports that say that piece of equipment has to go, that needs to be repaired, the glass blocks that are broken, the peeling paint. You mentioned something very specific that's actually easy to deal with. Continuing with the painting project in there, we're talking walls, is on the docket for the summer. We're lining that up because that's a small-scale thing. But the equipment, the hoops, cleaning the banners, all of those things are in a much bigger package that we weren't going to address in this because we know it's important to the community, it has to be done right, and it was a lot bigger than, hey, let's sneak it in. Does that make sense? So we're talking about it.
I knew it wasn't in that.
Yeah.
But it is something that I hope we are looking at.
Oh, most definitely.
In the future because that ceiling in that gym looks terrible.
Well, see, the aesthetics, the painting would have been done seamlessly without anybody even discussing, it would have come right out of Capital Reserve. We would have voted at some point and somebody said, we need to paint the gym in Bethel. We've got an estimate for $45,000 and that's the exact kind of thing that the Capital Reserve Fund would just absorb. The other stuff would be a little harder, like you were talking about, but the paint and any little safety concerns that were, say, less than $50,000 total, that's the exact kind of thing we like to have the Capital Reserve absorb.
And there are pieces that are still taking place. Again, the things that we identify as essential but aren't huge ticket items, we're replacing the rear doors to make sure they're safe because right now, I mean, they're aged. There are pieces we've been addressing purely for the safety. Whether or not we move towards a big package or conversations about that, we're still looking at how do we improve the safety of things like the cargo net, the rock, all the things that have failed inspection. So there's a whole list of, now what do we do with this? How do we move forward? That felt, I mean, it's an important enough space, but we wanted to address, how do we improve the quality of the building in South Roylton and the safety here and then move on? So there's not an articulated...
So there's not an articulated phase two. There's a, okay, we know the next step is completing that list with EEI.
And we did invest a lot of money in Bethel in this building. Was that two years ago? The Woodchip Bowl?
Yeah.
And, and doing a whole lot of work around that, so...
Everything I said isn't just coming from me.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm very disappointed to not see other people sitting here with me tonight.
Yes.
And I know you guys must be too.
Yes.
Because you have to have a way of changing their mind and, um, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree.
And what happens if this one gets turned down?
We can't, we can't bring it up again in this fiscal year.
And, and it is disappointing. I, I mirror that because both votes were very close. And when you're getting such close votes and people don't seem to be participatory or interested, that does not come off, I don't like that, so...
I'm very disappointed with our town.
I wanted to go back to one of your other points. Um, and you were saying like in three years, if the governor's plan goes through. If, if the governor's plan actually went through, where we're going to have to be dis-five districts of 4,000 students, that would mean there's no school anywhere outside of Chittingen County that could support that. So that would mean they'd be starting from scratch, having to build new schools. And we know how, how these things go. We're talking probably 10 years out before there would actually be a change.
And the new schools would be charter schools.
Yeah. I'm not so concerned about the closing after listening to you yesterday and today, so...
I just want to say thank you for, for coming. Because even though there aren't a lot of people online, there's not a lot of people in the room, what I've seen is that a lot of people do watch the recordings. And you see a lot of chatter after the fact about the recordings. Um, so you coming and expressing and asking those questions and getting the information out is very important because...
And those are all the questions I've heard too. Like at Vapes, for instance, where people will sit down at the table.
Every day. You see it on social media every day.
So you have a great deal of influence in this town, without a doubt, to a few.
I know how hard it is to raise money after just raising money for a war memorial.
Yeah. But if you could spread that word...
Keep getting around between now and '20.
I go stand on my corner, okay?
Stand on a soapbox.
I'll go down with sign.
We can get you some signs.
Hey, if, if, if you're gonna go on the bridge with a sign, I'll meet you. We can do coffee a day or two. I'll hold a sign that says vote yes for the bond with you. No problem.
Maybe we could get Scott to carry two flags.
Scott Putney.
One flag for the school bond and one flag for Ukraine. See, this is just marching all around.
I love it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Scott about that. Any questions online? Do we still have people online?
No one.
They're done.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I, I really thank you. It's, at this point, we've had so many informational meetings and I really appreciate that people are actually showing an interest. Like, because that's been our problem. That I think we haven't gotten the, over the communication hump. Because if people really see what we just saw and think about it, I don't understand how it's not an easy decision.
You're right about...
I brought two people to the November informational meeting who had told me that morning that they were, that they were planning to vote no. And I said, how about coming to the meeting just so you can see the presentation? And when they left, both women said, okay, I'm voting, I'm going to vote in favor now. And it's just it, that's it. I mean, I just happened to run into them and they told me, oh, no, I'm, I'm against it.
I think you're right about having that video up would really be helpful.
Yeah, let's, let's see if we can...
It might be a little late.
Yeah.
Gotta really get it out there quick if you're gonna do it.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
Just seeing that music room down there and those kids so tight, bringing that instrument up steps and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's...
I, I, I mean, it's really, the 110, 120 decibels and the closeness of the children when they have to practice, I mean, that's, it's, it's not safe. Not for, if like a fire broke out in the room and it's not safe for the continued hearing. And I mean, I have not said this out loud, but if someone's parents got upset or if somebody said, went to the doctor, and I have a hearing problem now and they said, I play band and I think it's, it's, that's, that's on us. We're, we're supposed to be providing safe spaces for the kids to do these things. And that space is unsafe in at least two ways.
The fire marshal wouldn't like that space with one door either.
I was just gonna ask that because I'm closer to phone back. Do they have an emergency exit out of that spot?
It was in the picture.
This one.
There is.
But you get that many kids out with that much stuff all around them. Take a long second.
All right, very good, I'm done.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Is there any other discussion that needs to happen right now? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All favor?
Yeah, Dave.